Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this work session for the Beaver Creek City Council. And we are on Zoom today, so it's going to be an interesting file. But to start off, I'd like a roll call, please.
Councilmember Vales?
Here.
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia? Councilmember Schwartz?
Here.
Mayor Adams?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
I'm here, thank you. You have an agenda before us this evening? Or any changes or alterations? One, by the way, just on item number five, I would like to set a committee and event updates because most of us haven't been anywhere. But just to say council time, we can talk about whatever it is each one of you may talk about. So, any other changes? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Still move. Second.
Technically, I guess we need one to change the agenda. So, can I have a motion to change the agenda, please?
Motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and second to amend the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? Motion carries. Now, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So, I move down to discussion items. And first off is the COVID-19 updates.
All right, I'll start off and then we'll have each department head give you guys a real brief what's been going on with the department heads. As you, as council has seen, the, I think it was probably the third order, third city manager order that we've had updated. Today was a day that we started with more essential personnel reporting. There's only basically park, recreational, golf, food and beverage side, and the senior center that is nonessential employees at this time. We began last week looking at, well, we've started ever since this has all started, but pieces of the puzzle keep coming in. We're looking at city revenues and expenditures. Revenues like local government fund, I was on city manager call today, and we got something from our auditor as well that potentially, and we don't know if this is through year end or just next month, but you're talking 40% reduction in local government fund. On the call, somebody said that, you know, they're estimating 45% local of gas tax decrease. Looking at, you know, hotel motel tax is probably going to go to zero because, you know, most of the hotels are closed or very near zero. We actually got a letter from a hotel asking, telling us they're unable to pay the taxes that are currently due because they already spent it. That's mismanagement there, but we'll go on. Property tax, we're hearing the county may be saying something up to 15% countywide as a reduction or delinquency rate when we get to second half. We, you know, some of these numbers you gotta realize, nobody really knows. I think our amount would be much lower than that for city of Beaver Creek, hopefully, but still it's something to deal with. Investment income will be down as interest rates are near zero. And then all our, you know, your parks programming fees, you know, when we, since we haven't had any senior center fees or nothing because we haven't had any. Golf, food and beverage, of course, is nothing. And, you know, we're, hopefully, that all we'll see as far as grant wise is a delay in the reappropriation of the mid-year state budget when they, they may be delayed reappropriating some grants. We have the grant that, like Shakertown, that has to be reappropriated. We're in the middle of it, so hopefully they wouldn't deny us, they can't, they're not going to deny us the second part of the grant. With all these kinds of things still in the flux, we knew that we had to take some, do some immediate things, which we did. Hiring freeze, including full and part-time and seasonal positions, except for those that are deemed to be essential. Capital purchasing, we looked at that for any freezes that we could have. A lot of things are already underway, but there are certain things of, like, you know, the police cars, we haven't ordered them yet. We can wait till fall, see what's going to happen. Anything that we haven't actually ordered yet is kind of on hold. Capital project freeze as well. Most of the things have already been bid out. Now, a bit of good news, a bit of good news. Because when you're talking the gas tax, which could be a lot of, you know, significant dollars. You know, the things that we have already bid out because we're on it, we're not waiting to, you know, early bird catches the worm, so to speak. But we have seen some significant savings from our bids that we have put out. Mike, please correct me. Today I saw, I signed the contract for the paving of the streets. That's infrastructure, I didn't feel like we should stop that. The bid came in about $600,000 below our estimate. So, $600,000. I believe another project, was it Dayton Xenia came in, was it $200,000 or $300,000 below? Mike, was that $200,000 or $300,000?
Yeah, I think it was, it was two or three. I don't remember the number either, but the point is spot on.
Yeah.
Projects that we've been receiving.
Yeah, because if we were right on budget with those, I'd be a little bit more nervous with the gas tax, not knowing that, but since we're well below, I feel a lot more positive. But we are still looking at any other capital projects that we can put a hold on. But most, for the most part, we are already on top of it and have things started. We have a freeze on current seasonals, so some of the seasonals that haven't started back yet, we've put on hold. Knowing though, that please keep in mind for our infrastructure, our seasonals that we use at the golf course, we couldn't maintain without the golf course because we don't have staff there all year round. So, like the golf course seasonals, we have to have those to maintain the golf course. But many different seasonals and part-time seasonals, we have put a hold on. That does bring me back to, unfortunately, we did have a reduction, a furlough of five part-time employees this, so far. Many being, several being in golf, food and beverage, and one being in parks. So, different departments of the full-time. Our goal was trying to have full-timers shift and do whatever needed to be done in that situation. But that's an unfortunate thing. Of course, we call it a furlough. That means if we, things get better, we're able to bring them back. It's not like they have to go through a rehiring process. So, that's the doom and gloom on that. And let me, now, here's something I suspect you'll hear from the department heads before I go to them. I do want to commend staff, they've done an outstanding job. They have been over backwards, they have done everything possible to do all the work. You're going to hear about all the work that has been done since this coronavirus has started. So, I'll turn this over, but I thank staff for all the hard work and dedication that they have put in. I'm going to turn it over. Chief Evers, you're up first, please, sir.
Good evening. Glad, I'm glad to be back in contact with all of you, even if it's in a distancing format. Wanted to share with you what's been going on in the police department as everybody has had to adapt to this new, this new way of doing things. I will say, in my 38 years, I've never experienced anything like this. Trying to keep cops from gathering, practicing social distancing is probably one of the biggest challenges we face. But I commend everybody, they've done a good job. We've instituted protocols over here that are obviously are for everyone's protection, but still trying to master the priority of providing the best possible service to the community. Calls are down in a way that's a good thing, but, you know, there are some trends that are starting to trend up, and those would be attempted suicides. And we are seeing a lot more in the domestic violence neighborhood than we would normally see in a given time period. But those are, quite honestly, given what everyone is dealing with, those would be expected. We have, have some challenges ahead of us with some of our programming that we had on the agenda as of today. I canceled, instructed Mark Brown to cancel Safety Town, which was going to be held in June. I just don't see how we can go forward with that when the schools have closed for the remainder of the year. And I'm not sure we were going to be able to get the school facilities to use anyway. So, I thought it was prudent to go ahead and make that decision today. We are going to have our Kalia onsite in a virtual format that was canceled March 16th. That will take, on May 11th through the 14th. It's all going to be done either by Zoom meeting, GoToMeeting, or over the phone. But we're still working through all of those logistics. That'll be a challenge. And I just got about 10 minutes before we started this meeting, Kalia sent out a notice that the conference that we were to attend in July to appear before the commission for our review has been canceled, and they will be going to a virtual conference. So, we're going to be doing all of that by video. So, there will be no traveling involved to the conference site to sit before the commission. So, again, we're proceeding. I want to commend the other department heads and what they've done with regards to, you know, providing and working with us, providing the necessary PPE equipment. We're in pretty good shape. And again, I want to commend all the officers for their adapting and overcoming these changing times. We're doing a lot of business checks relative to all these closed businesses in our community. And we're doing a lot of extra patrols. Our traffic is down, and a lot of that is, we're still getting complaints on traffic, and we're still addressing traffic. But it's, it's again, one of those situations where we're trying to address the priorities of the moment. Right now, that's making sure our community's safe, that our, our businesses are protected, and we'll continue to move forth and do that in a prudent and efficient manner. So, that's all I have for you this evening.
Thanks, chief.
All right. And maybe we'll have questions at the end of, if anybody has questions for all of us at the department heads, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor? If that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, that's fine, thanks.
Okay. Randy is up next, planning and development, give a quick update, sir? And mute yourself? Still muted, Randy.
Is that better?
Yeah.
There we go. All right, sorry about that, I forgot to unmute me. No, I wanted to second Pete's, Pete, your commendation on the staff. I can't be, couldn't be happier with the staff and what my staff's been doing over the last couple of weeks. It's been a busy couple of weeks. Me, Matt, or my code enforcement officer, he's gone out and done over 100 inspections, code enforcement inspections over the last month. He's done 60 inspections for zoning permits, so we go out when they inspect, they stake out where a deck or a shed or, so he's done 60 of those over the last month. In terms of slight difference, a lot of the, the hundred-plus code enforcement violations that he's gone out and done inspection, he's actually been issuing warnings rather than the formal violation notice, just to give people a little bit more time to get things corrected. And that's when it comes to like junk vehicles or property maintenance issues or landscaping maintenance issues. Over the last week or so, he's gotten a few more grass warnings or grass complaints, and because those are public health issues and have, it could be public health issues with high grass growing and mosquito being born in, you know, the higher grass areas with water standing, he's going to go do the formal violation process, which is slightly different. It gives a definitive, if you don't have it fixed by this date, then, you know, we go to the next step where the warning is, you have a certain amount of days, and then we'll go out, and if it's still not done, then we'll take you down the violation path. In terms of permits, you know, we're still full go on permits, over 60 residential permits. Now, that's not just new houses, that's also any sheds or decks or fences or any additions and things like that. And we've issued 14 commercial permits, that includes signs and certificate of use compliance and a few new commercial properties. But again, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, I couldn't be broader of my staff, you know, the, it's challenging, the communication is just challenging, and this is something that none of us has experienced, so we're definitely learning as we go. But other than that, that's all I have for this evening.
All right, Randy. Glad, glad, that's one of the things that we updated with the Dude Solutions. Part of that was the, where you could pay for permits online through engineering and through planning and development. So, again, technology, recent technology that we upgraded to within the last year or so has, including our time clock system as well, where people can do that from remotely as well. So, we've had a couple of technology things that have benefited during this difficult time.
Definitely, I'd say probably 95% of our payments have been online, which has saved a lot, you know. It speeds up the process because non-online, somebody mail it in, you know, it delays it by a couple of days by the time we get in and out of the process.
I, I think that's one of the items that when, however, we get quote-unquote "back to normal," that those are the items that we've seen that, hey, this can be done, and that's something we'll push harder for, and it's more productive and, you know, no face-to-face needed. Now, we're always going to have a face-to-face eventually, but, you know, that's a good thing that we'll learn that it can be done.
Definitely.
All right, next up, Mr. Tonerode, please.
Thanks, Pete. Just, just a couple of things. You know, I wanted to thank the city manager for his leadership, and mayor and city council for your support during this challenging time during the COVID-19 crisis. You know, I've heard from a number of our employees who deeply appreciate the support and the flexibility that's been graciously granted to our workforce. As we adjust to these changing times and deliver the necessary services to our residents, the support that you have given us as department heads and given the city manager, and ultimately then we're able to give to our staff certainly has not gone unnoticed. So, I just wanted to take that opportunity to say thank you. Our staff has continued to be responsive to resident inquiries. We've continued our ongoing contract management. We're continuing to move forward on priority projects, and we're like working on some of our long-term goals as well. It's been unique, we've learned new ways that we're working together. As Pete mentioned, we're very thankful for the technology that we've put in place over the last few years, that's really made a big difference for us. And honestly, we've probably moved a little bit further in a lot of that technology as we've been apart. We continue to maintain our city service operations, controlling our employees' exposure. We're learning how to do things a little bit differently. A lot of the public service side and maintenance side, as in park maintenance, is a lot in close proximity, so we're figuring out new ways, similar to, as Dennis mentioned earlier, or Chief mentioned earlier, it's hard to figure out how to break those groups apart and figure out new ways of doing things. Pete alluded earlier, and I wanted to make, make sure that I highlighted a couple of those things as well. The Shakertown Road Extension Project has been continuing. Those of you who've been out and about on Dayton Xenia Road also realize that the utility work is there. We're awarding the contract for the Dayton Xenia Roadwiden Project, the city manager indicated, our paving program, which includes our base program and our alternate program. It also includes a couple of other projects, one of them being some car path resurfacing that will happen, also some park roads resurfacing, Rotary Park is on the list to get done. In fact, we're hoping to be able to do that while the gate is still closed. So, we're continuing to move forward on some of those projects. We're keeping a sharp eye on expenses and looking at revenues as well, trying to respond to those changing economics that keep, keep coming before us. So, the last thing I would just kind of finish with is, again, thank you, mayor, city council, for your continued support as we work to try and meet the needs of the residents during these uncertain times. It really is appreciated to know that, that the support that our staff has felt, they've really expressed that to me a lot, and I would be remiss if I didn't pass that along to all of you. So, thank you, thank you for, for all that you're doing.
All right, now, bringing up the rear, Mr. Casera, which I stole some, some of your thunder, Bill, but you have to unmute yourself, there you go, but please report.
Well, and so I always get the envious task of talking about the positive things happening. So, as Pete alluded, we have already done some projections about the potential reductions in the revenue, and everybody's kind of going crazy trying to figure out what their crystal balls, what's going to actually happen by the end of the year. We know from history that whenever the state is at a shortfall, they tend to look at the local government fund as a potential area that they can cut back a little bit, which is always far in detriment.
Cash grab.
As Pete said, you know, I, again, we're looking at some of the things that, you know, you really don't, it doesn't usually come into play with something like this, but hotel motel, that's a fairly constant stream for us, and the big events coming up for soccer tournaments and things like that, that just right now aren't going to be there, and we've all seen the market kind of go straight downhill. So, that interest that we, interest revenue that we've experienced in the past just isn't going to be there. But, oh, we've gotten pretty good with filing with the Ohio AMA, a request for public assistance. We've been through that, we've been approved for the COVID-19 FEMA designation. So, again, right now, the expenditures related to that are really, for us, are down to PPEs and kind of tracking the employees' time for those that actually didn't work in the event that FEMA turns around and wants to reimburse us for that, sort of like the tornado incident where, you know, we filed for everything, and they had some model programs, and it's right now, it's all up in the air as to whether or not it's going to filter down to the local government. But again, going back to what Pete indicated, that, you know, with the new software that we purchased last year, right stuff, we were able to actually go in and code all those hours, so we can track them, we have the support for them in the event that, again, FEMA and Ohio AMA decide that they're going to reimburse local governments right now for some of those expenditures, we'll be poised and ready to go to, to file those. We've also been, again, tracking that through the software, not only for the people that have been working remotely, and we've got about 25 that are working through VPN, which basically shows them exactly what's on their screen at work when they're at home. And that's been very successful in order to keep things moving and keeping things up and running as best we can. We also implemented the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, the FFCRA. Again, for those that aren't familiar with it, it gives 80 hours of emergency sick leave to anyone that, again, there's five or six criterias, but again, it may have been affected, have been quarantined, that type of thing. And that's to be reimbursed by, again, the federal government. Again, whether or not it trickles all the way down to the city, we'll, we'll actually see, because again, in most cases, they're usually going to take that as a credit on their taxes that they pay the federal government, and some of those we don't pay, so be interesting to see. I know that the OML has been full court press trying to get the federal government, and the state has also been aggressive too about trying to get some money down to the local governments and some nonprofits that weren't in the first couple of rounds. So, we'll see where that goes. We also contacted our insurance company, we do have some business interruption insurance that we can apply for, mostly for the golf course right now, for the lost events, including food and beverage weddings and events like that, and then also the couple of golf outings that have already been canceled. And there's a process where we can go and tell them what we usually made during the month that we were closed, and what we didn't make, and they'll provide us a net insurance claim for that. So, again, it's, they realize that the expenditures aren't there, and so again, they're looking at the net loss for that insurance claim, but also the pool in itself as insurance claims for the entire pool. And that entire pool for this disruption by a pandemic is about $750,000. So, again, I'm sure everybody will be knocking on the door, trying to get some of that insurance money, but it has already been capped, and how they go about distributing that will be an interesting process that they've never had to do before. So, that's kind of the update from the finance side, that again, we're poised and ready to go, we've got everything tracking, we're tracking all the expenditures related to the, our response, mostly it's PPE right now, but again, if we have to, this goes on a little longer and we have to do anything else, so we'll be poised and ready to track that from an expenditure side. So, again, we can get that directly to FEMA when they get it down to our level and request reimbursement. So, but like I said, we, again, we've got this pretty much down. Just to give you an update too, the last disaster, we've gotten all the information to FEMA, and they're in the process of auditing all the information that we've submitted to them, so I'm hoping that that reimbursement for those expenditures starts coming down the pike here in the next couple of months. So, again, the process is that FEMA reviews it, Ohio AMA reviews it, and then finally they go ahead and settle those claims with us. So, that was good news. We have a new project manager that is really trying to get the reimbursement off the, his docket. Again, they've got certainly a lot of other natural disasters that they're working on too, so they're trying to close ours out, which has been a while now, so. That is the update from finance.
Thank you.
But again, you know, thanks to all the departments, we've been working with skeleton crew and getting out all the, you know, accounts payable, getting everybody paid, and a lot of the supervisors have been spending a lot of time coding these things. And again, it's a lot of work upfront, but in the long run, they end up paying off, having all the stuff coded and tracked as we're doing it versus doing it prospectively, so.
And Mr. Casera?
Thank everybody out there for, for their efforts too, because again, it is a lot of work with skeleton crews that are, man, and the finance department, and are on, it's still going on, and some of the things that you would think that would get postponed really haven't.
Yeah, literally the auditors were in here, you know, that was odd. And who would have known, Mr. Casera, that a bottle of hand sanitizer would cost more than a barrel of oil at this point in time? That's crazy, but it's true.
That's right.
So, questions, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you.
Anybody have any questions? Do we want to go in order, or do we want to just raise your hand and go? I'll start if you don't mind, and I, just to start off, I want to thank Randy, Mike, Pete, Bill, and of course Pete for, for all the work you guys do, you know, you hand the thanks out this way, but you guys are on the front line, you're doing the work. Pete's been keeping us informed very well, and so thank you for all the things you're doing during this episode we're going through. So, who has a comment? Anybody? Any questions?
I just want to echo what the mayor said, I really appreciate all the hard work you guys are putting in under these trying circumstances. It's, we've not been here before, so it's all, you know, a new frontier to try to maneuver ourselves through, and you've done an excellent job.
Hey, great. Same here, congratulations to all the staff for the hard work, and Pete-
Great. Same here. Congratulations to all the staff for the hard work, and Pete for your leadership and direction during this challenging time.
I agree. And I know Mr. Banaro thanked us, but really, truly, it's our gratitude that he's speaking to you for all the hard work that you're doing. And Chief, thank you so much for keeping the city together. I know there's been a lot of tough decisions recently, and you just are handling so well and keeping us all together here. So thank you so much for all of your hard work over the past few months.
I'd like to say too, I've gotten really great response from your staff, Pete. I had a planning question unrelated to the city, but I got ahold of Sandra the other day, and she called me right back from home. And, you know, everybody's been really responsive, and I appreciate it.
Very good.
Got a question for Mike. Mike, down there by Dollar General is a pretty good crater. And when you pull out a Dollar General going to the east, your tire's going to get in that. Could you have some guys get out and fill that?
Yeah, we'll go over and take a look at that. Thanks, Mr. Green.
There is a lot of construction going on, but that thing's getting bigger and bigger.
Is it westbound or eastbound? Do you know?
South, south side.
Yeah, with the east side as you pull out.
Okay. We'll send a crew over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think there was some question on whether or not that was ours or theirs.
Oh.
Yeah. Whether that was part of the driveway, or part of their apron, or due to their construction that caused that. I think there was some questions. We'll check it out, though.
We'll take a look at it either way. If it's not us, then we'll let the contractor know. It sounds like we've been out maybe on this once already. So, thanks.
And I was just a hair amiss when I did not include Diane in our conversation. Diane's been keeping us well informed as well and working hard at home. So thank you, Diane, for your hard work here in this as well.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to echo what you, Vice Mayor, and the rest of my council members have said. Staff has been unbelievable during this time. Like everyone said, this is uncharted territory, and everyone's done it with grace, and it's been very kind throughout the process. So, keep up the good work.
Anything else on COVID?
It's all we have.
All right, let's move on. Pete, we'll go to the alternative revenue.
And I think it really was a sheet that we had from before, but we kind of retweeted it. I think you guys were, I'm assuming, just wanting to know, you know, according to the old schedule, next week would be the third reading for the income tax. Well, I just don't think that's going to happen. But I sent you a file that just basically had the information of the timeline of what it would take. You know, nobody saw this coming whatsoever, record unemployment, you know, with the circumstances that are going on. We did provide in the update that the, there is a May alternative timeline. And of course, those are worst case scenario timelines, because basically, if it, council, we have time, if it's not going to be this November, we don't have a crystal ball, but clearly Governor Dewine, you know, would not even be, not even willing to say school will go back in fall, you know. I think he's thinking it'll go back a different way, maybe, or partial, you know, split telecommuting and split. You know, I don't know. He doesn't know either. But with that kind of thing, it's kind of difficult, because the original plan is blown out of the water. But even if you tried to say, well, by November voting time, maybe things will be 98% back to normal. I think I'm dreaming if I say that. But, you know, you'd have to begin by the, having a first reading by May 26 to begin the process. And so that's, you're coming up in one month's time from now. Basically, you'd have to begin the process to get it on the ballot, or you're bust for November. So, I don't think by May 26, you're going, we're going to have any more clue. I think it's, I mean, that's just my opinion, that you guys, it's council's decision to, on that aspect of it. But I did want to remiss, though, that the timeline for May of 2021 that is on there, as far as putting the ordinance or doing, going through the ordinance first, second, and the third reading of an ordinance, if council wanted to do a third reading, you could do that in fall, so you wouldn't put yourself up against the clock of trying to do it in January and trying to start that process. You can do that first part of the ordinance anytime. And then, when you're ready, the, so many, was it 90 days out to do the resolution to put it on the ballot, that's the second phase. So, you know, council can decide if, you know, if you don't do November for that, and this is something the council still is interested in doing, and seeing how the economy gets, and how, you know, people get back to work. If May would become a goal to have a look at it. I know that I'm being still asked by those that worked on it, that, you know, they understand the situation, but there's still interest. Of course, you know, this was resident-led to propose this, and they're still there. But they understand the circumstances that we're doing. But, you know, that's something council could decide if they postpone November, so to speak, or not do it in November. If the thought is to look in May, you know, then the process could, so that it wouldn't be such a rush, or wouldn't be such a last second deadline, you could literally do it in, you know, October or something like that, if you wanted to do the first three readings. And that would invite discussion and timeframe, and you'd have much more time to do something like that. Bill, did you, this, Bill kind of, well, Mr. McHugh started it, and then Bill took what we originally had and tweaked it. Bill, did you have any comments on the timeline?
No. Again, these are the worst case scenarios for the November and the May 2021 election. So those are the latest times you can do it. It's like Pete mentioned, that you can actually have the ordinance prepared, you know, early or in between those dates. And as long as the ordinance is through its 30 days after the third reading, then again, the resolution to put it on the ballot then becomes just the critical timeline for getting it over to the board of elections. So, again, I just want to make sure that, I highlighted one thing, is the 3.4 mill street levy. Again, we've got three shots to get that passed. And the first is November of this year, and then May and November of last, or 2021. And at that point, that revenue source would cease. So again, we want to just make sure that you're cognizant of that. If we're not going to bring forward an income tax during those two dates, then that November 2021 would be the last time to get that street levy renewed. So, just make sure everybody was aware of that.
Yeah, and let's remember that, and I know we've talked about it with all the discussions of, you know, that 3.4 mill was what we were, the initial plan by the residents that came forward was that was, that would roll off, so to speak, timeout, so to speak. But, you know, if we don't have an initiative on, as Bill said, you know, you're talking 3.4 mills, which is $4.5 million, and is the main, is basically the operating, that's where you're, all your staff, most of your staff costs come for public services. So that's your street crews and all that. So, where most of the other funds that are the street funds are the capital, and that's where we do our projects out of. So this is the operation of it. So we, it's not something we want to gamble with, or we'd lose significant amount of employees with, and no way, no way to shift anything around. So.
And as Pete alluded to, the, you know, the Beaver Creek Fair Funding Committee is still active. They're, they sent over a, like a two-sheet summary of the high points of the income tax. So again, they're still working on refining the critical talking points and working on some education pieces. So, we wanted to make sure that you were aware that they're still excited to get it out there, whether or not that holds up. That's, I guess the point we wanted to give you was, is that depending on what's going on, again, first reading, again, third reading right now is optional, but if you wanted to go three readings, then May 26 would be the latest date. You could have that on the agenda, which is really just a month from now. So.
We certainly, if we don't do it in November, then you only have one shot. Because in the following November, you have to hit that levy pass.
Yeah.
So that's, keep in mind that if we put it off until the May election, we have one shot. The original goal, original idea was put it on in November, and if it was reasonably close, and even if it failed, then we would have a second shot in May. But that's not looking real bright right now. But we do need to give serious thought as to whether or not we want to try to put this on the November ballot. Downside is, we don't know, is what we don't know, and that is how that the staff can be out there pushing this and talking to groups, when those groups are not getting together.
That's the problem.
Nobody to talk to. So, we did probably, maybe even by the, you know, have some feel to what direction we might want to instruct staff to go by the next meeting that we have. So it, yeah.
I was going to say, at the, you know, the, more or less, I mean, the, the ordinance is pretty much done. There was a couple, if you remember, right before we went to stay at home and everything got canceled, we were going to have a work session. And that work session was going to talk through the, Steve, what was it, two, three, four points? That was about it, to fine tune, just to make sure that council was, you know, understood. Because if you remember, from the tax ordinance, tax changes that has happened, the state really took away most of the options now for any new tax. Now, some of the older, the cities that have had income tax are grandfathered in what they do, but any new income tax, you know, there's, they've taken away the options. So, which in some ways, okay, it simplifies it for our decision-making process, but some reasons, you know, for some, though, it, you know, took our home rule authority away from us, away, you know, to do things we felt like we should be able to do. So it's, you know, that pro and con. Steve, do you have a comment? This is a few, few things, but it's pretty well ready to go.
Yeah, there's, yeah, I mean, I can, I've actually sort of held up on it. We had some records requests last week, had to really deal with, it took quite a time. But with respect to it, I'll have the thing out probably later this week or early next week. I mean, it is in a regular format. There really aren't, it does, you know, tagging through one of the difficulties, is really trying to figure out and make sure we don't include anything in it that shouldn't be in it based upon, because we weren't having an income tax pre January 1, 2016, that really was a kind of critical date, because the new bill is, the new law really changed our rights as opposed to what others might otherwise have. So a lot of the provisions, we simply, unfortunately, it'd be nice to have some, but we can't. So we're just going to have to kind of go with a more streamlined version, shall we say.
Yeah. Hey, I did have one question. Diane, since it'd be an ordinance, be a public hearing, is there a 15-day, or is that the notification of a public hearing that you have to give on that, or is that just a standard ordinance public hearing?
It's just a standard ordinance public hearing.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure we didn't have to back up 15 days for you to get advertisement out. Okay. So, so basically, council, the decision as far as giving staff direction, pretty much, Steve's going to have it ready anyway. But pretty much, if we continue to have a work session on May 18 as a work session, you can instruct us to bring it forward or not bring it forward. But, you know, so you still have some time, you know, just in case to chew on it. And if a miracle happens and this COVID dries up or something, then, you know, great. But you have a little bit more time. You don't have to make it in the next couple, couple weeks. So, worst case scenario, I think we could go to the 18th if we have, have it for a decision as far as bring forward or not. If not, May 11th is definitely, you could tell us then, too.
One thing that the tornado did, and that this pandemic did, is to illustrate that you don't want all your revenue in one basket, coming from one source, so to speak.
Yeah.
Now, I will say that the cities that have almost all their revenue from income tax.
Income tax.
They are really, really hurting right now.
They are.
So we are somewhat blessed that we have a lot of revenue that's going to fluctuate, but not be drastically knocked down. Right. But to have more than one source is certainly a, a real benefit to any community.
Yeah. Yeah, the ones that have 80 and 90% of their, you know, it comes from income tax, you know, they have 80% of their revenue from income tax. That hurts. Yeah, they're, you're right. They've got major cuts coming, and, you know, there's a, which, of course, we belong, then Mayor Stone's a president, the city, mayor's managers and stuff, and, you know, we're, you know, sending letters, you know, on behalf of other cities, and, you know, they're trying to get assistance for the loss, because, well, quite frankly, it's the state that shut down everything, and, you know, causing from retail to restaurants to, you know, a lot of employment that was forced to shut down. So therefore, that's why a lot of the cities are, you know, asking for, hey, you know, we didn't cause this. So I think they're, they're looking for that. Again, we wouldn't be, there's other revenues that they're still up against, again, on top of their income. And we've set, we've listed those, the local government fund, hotel tax, gas tax. They're dealing with those on top of their income tax. So, yeah, we, a well-balanced mayor is, I think, is what you're hinting to, is a good way to be, for sure.
That letter that Pete referred to from the mayor's managers that I signed and was sent last week is a, just urging, Ohio apparently is not the only state, but one of the, one of the few states that rely, the cities rely almost entirely on income tax. And so, in their last relief effort, the, the only city that got any direct benefit was a city that was larger than $500,000. So that, that's Columbus. So what we're trying to do, and this letter was urging, is that this next round of relief specifically identified that some revenue recovery for local cities without running it through the county commissioners or the state or whatever. So, we'll see what happens, but that's been worked on right now. Any questions? Thoughts?
I would like to say, just for the benefit of the rest of the council members, I think it would be beneficial to hear your opinions on the upcoming initiative, and whether we should have an ordinance sooner or later or late. I mean, I would love to hear multiple perspectives, because, you know, I know that our funding situation has been impacted, and we do have a community group that's willing to do the work, albeit we don't know if they're going to actively be out, you know, soon, or in the fall. But we've already identified the fact that we need additional revenues. And so I guess I would just like to hear what other council members think as far as the income tax initiative, whether it be this November or in May, or what your opinions are.
Anybody have a gut reaction?
No gut reaction, but I do have a question. Has anyone talked to individuals from that fair funding committee to see if they have a plan, or perhaps some type of outreach perspective in the event that we were to put this on for November?
I, we got an email from Brian, you know, just saying, you know, he put together a pamphlet that's an educational piece. And, you know, I just, all I stated back to him is that, you know, we're not sure at this point what, you know, what council's going to do or decide. And, but the input that I kind of got from him is, the same info as from before, is that they'll be ready to go. I think they are ready to go. It's just, this would just, this would change things, though, like if you can't meet, or you're not allowed a certain size, you know, what would, how would they do that? Yeah, that, that's the question. I don't think they, they know. But if council says, yeah, let's go ahead because that's November, they would be ready and they would go to the greatest extent that they would be allowed to, to do it. I, I do know that part. But I plan, you know, like, set up Zoom meetings or something. I mean, potentially, they could do some, stuff like that. But I think the original plan was to, for them to, you know, hold educational meetings. And the plan was for us to, as a city, we can hold informational, we just can't say vote for, of course. So, you know, that, those were the thoughts. But any more of a plan from that, no, I, I could seek more information from Brian and the group to see if he has any more input and send it to you guys if that, if that's the case.
Okay, my thought is simply that the general election is a fairer election, if that's the right word, for the citizens. Granted, we, we would be fighting a battle with one hand tied behind our back if we can't have meetings to push this initiative. And if you wait and deliberate, if we deliberately wait until May of next year, now, now you have the, you're going to have the group, and it doesn't matter who or what, they're going to say, why on earth are you doing it in a primary instead of a general election? So that's the, that's my only real urgency.
That's true.
And I guess I do have a question, Pete, and that is, the ordinance is date-specific as to when, what ballot it goes on? Diane, you mean, you can answer that?
Or Mr. McHugh.
It is, Mayor.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I forgot that you keep down there. You're down the bottom of my screen there. Okay, yeah, so it is date-specific. So we could not, we could not go ahead and authorize it and end up for some reason, or go ahead and pass the ordinance, and then for some reason, we weren't allowed to have public gatherings, that sort of thing. That it would just naturally go to May.
Well, you know, basically, it's a two-step process. One, you have to have an ordinance, and then you have to also have a resolution. So the ordinance is probably not as much date-specific as is the resolution. Well, that's what I think what he was asking.
Where I was getting to is that if we could pass an ordinance, if for some reason council decided this is what they want to do, could we pass an ordinance and then hold off on a resolution until such time as we see what happens in May and June?
Yeah, I think you're probably pretty safe on that, as long as there aren't any intervening changes on the Ohio Vice Code, which is always a risk.
True.
So then we might have to go back and redo it, redo an, an ordinance. But all things, you know, I'll look at that a little bit, but I'll pull the code out and look at that a little more. But off the top of my head, I think you probably could do that because under the schedule here, the, the resolution, because it takes effect immediately, would be one of those things where you could simply, you know, it's always at the end of the process on the adoption of the actual ordinance. And generally, it tends to be the immediate meeting next that we do this. So, you know, you know, if we had to, so you really do have, because you do have a little bit of time in theory, I guess, is that if you were to go through the process here, you could, you know, wait and then decide only on that resolution. So, you know, you can adopt a tax ordinance, and if the resolution failed, it does not go on the ballot.
Okay, so then, then, I think Mayor was getting to, if we already passed the ordinance, and we end up, you know, council says, okay, yeah, let, let's not do it in November, then, you know, after November, or whenever we get in the right timeframe, since they pass that ordinance, and let's pretend no tax laws, no laws changed, so the ordinance is still in effect, everything's still correct in it, could they then put on for, use that ordinance for May's election?
Just pass that resolution, putting it on the May ballot.
Right. Can you still use that?
I think, I think, you know, again, I'd want to look at the code a little bit further, but generally, yes, I think you probably could do that. You could wait until December, you know, the first meeting in December and adopt the resolution to put it on the ballot for May.
Okay. Yeah, we'd like, I'd like to have an answer to that one. So we know what our options are.
That's a good question.
I would just.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would advise the council to, you know, kind of keep a, a close eye on what the governor is doing for the state. Let's see how quickly things are starting to reopen. Let's see how quickly people are getting their jobs back. This, this may impact people more than just the two or maybe three months that they're unemployed. It may take some people a while to get back on their feet and pay, pay back bills and other dues that they need to pay. So I would just encourage our council members, as we're looking through this, take a keen, keen eye on what's going on with the state and how things are progressing. I know the White House is a three-phase approach, and it's going to be different for every state, so let's see how it works for our state. I'm happy that we have some time to consider this. I don't think it's prudent to make a decision quickly. So I would just encourage everyone to kind of keep that in mind as we're making our decisions.
And, and one thing, if I may, Mayor, before, I'll shut up, keep in mind that the income tax that's proposed as is would not start or affect till January of two thousand and twenty-two. So I think we all have to kind of remember that. It is futuristic, so it is two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay. Anyone else?
And Tiffany, just for, to further your question a little bit, they were, that group was going to use social media quite a bit. So they, they were going to scatter in, you know, onsite meetings when they were scheduled before November. But I, I think that their big push, obviously, if you talk to Brian, that was going to be their big push anyway, was getting it out on social media and having the discussion that way was the, the big thrust of their process. So, again, I don't think that would change much right now. I think you're right. It just comes down to some of those meetings that they had already scheduled, you know, a month or two before the election would be the question mark, so.
Thank you for that. I think it's probably pros and cons as well. I mean, everybody's trapped at home, so participation in a Zoom meeting may be easier to get more residents involved in rather than just having meetings where people have to cut time out of their schedules and actually attend. So something else to think about.
Okay. That out, Pete, fails?
Yes, thanks, Bob. I just, you know, I, I am more in favor of if we can afford going for two different elections, November and a fallback in May, I think that benefits the, you know, the issue most.
I agree. All right, well, let's see what Mr. McHugh comes up with as far as an answer to our question and know what type of flexibility we have. But.
And what happens with Mr. Delany.
That's a good point. And we don't know what tomorrow's going to happen, and we'll keep an eye on what the governor does.
Amen.
All right, anyone else?
I do agree with you, Mayor.
Yes?
If we could do it in November, that would be better, simply because it is a general. And I'd like to see if Mr. McHugh could get some information for us by next week and give us a little bit more input so we have something to think about.
Steve, would you be able to get done with that by through to the decision points that if this does go forward, you know, we all understand what the decision points were? If you guys want to put that on for next week's agenda, we can do that, if, if you want.
Well, again, I think, I think everybody's getting in the same boat. We just, we've got to keep an eye out. It's going to change with what the governor does from day to day. And so it's.
Well, we'll have it ready, and you guys say go.
Throw some things tentatively out there to try to do, and then, and if we take them off, fine. If we need to add them back to the agenda, we'll do that too. But that'll be flexing. All right. Anything else? We'll move on to council time, and we can go individually here, if you like. You can talk about any of the committees you're on, or, or you can just talk about what you've been doing or what's been going on in your world. So Council Member Schwartz, you want to start?
Thank you, Mayor.
Stayed away from the kitchen.
First and foremost, I just want to thank everyone again, the staff. You've done an unbelievable job, Pete. I, we can't thank you enough. I know that you've been in the office constantly, and you've been keeping a surprise of things as they come in and as soon as they come in. So we very much appreciate that. As for meetings, everything has kind of just been delayed. I see that a lot of the organizations and things that I'm involved in have, just in the past one to two weeks, started using Zoom and kind of trying to connect that way. So I anticipate some more participation that way. I know Vice Mayor Adams and I sat in on the Fourth of July committee. As an update on that, what we had kind of decided is we were going to wait until June first to make any substantive decisions on the July fourth festivities. Essentially, have any direction from the governor, and if not from the governor, at least from Green County Public Health on kind of what the requirements and things were. We went over a wide array of different options that we could have, from having the full blue, narrowing it down just to the fireworks, and setting the fireworks off without actually having people in rotary parks. So just kind of a lot of options that are out on the table right now, but no decision is going to be really made until June. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you. Councilmember Jones, you got some comments?
Well, I don't think I have too many more than we've already talked about. Just thank you, Pete. Thank you to all the staff. On a, a personal note, I guess, thank you for reopening the golf course. I appreciate it very much. Taken advantage of it a few times. But really, I'm just happy that the, the community has been generally staying at home. I've been out a couple times to the grocery store, and it's, it's good to see people wearing masks. It's a little bit strange, but I think it's something that we're all going to have to get used to. And thanks again to all the staff.
Thank you. Councilman Carr.
Congratulations again to Pete and the staff, as I said before, Mayor. It's good to see the number of people that are out walking, getting exercise, working in their yards, just like you've never seen it so much. As I've seen it in the recent weeks here, you see a lot of, a lot of activity outside. It's good to see.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's great to see everyone today. I would just like to thank the staff for everything that they've been doing, Pete for all of your hard work, and also to Chief Evers for the police department in keeping everybody in line and making sure that we keep our officers and residents safe. Another big thank you to our residents who are working in the grocery stores, in the pharmacies, in the hospitals, to really combat this disease. And, you know, thank you for everyone for all of your sacrifices. You were unable to stay at home due to your jobs. I do have a brief update from the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. We had our meeting on April second as scheduled via Zoom. It went really well. We continue to work in the background, and the MBRPC is doing a really great job of keeping their employees safe while continuing to work for the area. They recently passed, or we, as MBRPC recently passed a resolution to get additional funding for disaster recovery. So we're still trying to work on ways to make sure we get help to our residents for recovery from the tornado. And still, again, I would urge everyone, even people who has need, to call that two-in-one number, United Way, if you still need help recovery from the tornado, the help is there. It just may look a little different in the next few months, but we are still trying to find ways to make sure we keep everybody safe and still bring in that assistance. So thank you again. Hopefully have another update from MBRPC in the next few weeks. But I hope everybody is doing well and staying home if you can.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Adams?
Well, I attended the meeting with Councilwoman Schwartz on the Fourth of July. She covered that pretty well. I also went to the New Development Council meeting via Zoom. And they're kind of like everybody else in disarray right now with scholarships that they award. And I know we're supposed to recognize seniors at the council meeting. We decided to wait until sometime in May to see if we'll be meeting in person for that to happen, because we certainly would like to do that in person. But if not, we can do it via Zoom or some other way. Other than that, there's not been a whole lot happening at the Adams household. Get out to walk the dogs, and they're getting to the point where they say not giving. And then moving with the mayor, that's been a good thing. So anyone that's interested in the move with the mayor, get out there and walk a little bit. Get out to grocery stores or whatever you need to do, but wear your mask and gloves, just to protect everybody else. There's two items that I would like to bring up. One of them is voting. That's next Tuesday. The deadline is next Tuesday. It asks to be by absentee ballot, ballot. And please do that if you haven't. This is a March primary in April, but we're, we need to get out and vote. And the second item is a census. We're in the middle of the census time. If you received a letter, please get that done. If not, you can go online and take care of your census at that point, because that's important to all of us, that they get an accurate count of who's, who's where. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. And I just have a little prepared statement I want to make, if you don't mind. And it's just, just take a minute to let everyone know that the city council, the city manager and his staff, we're all very proud of the cooperation everybody is giving to the state and local mandates. This is not an easy process. We've never been here before, but we're going to make it through it. If you're not sick, you don't have symptoms, I do, as Don Adams just said, to get out and walk, get out and walk around the yard, get out and walk around the block. Most health officials say that it's a, a good defense is to be well exercised. So that's supposed to be a good defense for the virus as well. We have a lot of people calling and asking for how they can help, sort of like we did with the tornado, but it's not nearly as specific. We don't, sometimes it's hard to know how people can help. Well, there's a, the governor has a website now that's together at governor.ohio.gov, which is set up just for people and to point people in the right direction where they can help. So as we all know, less than a year ago, we, we joined together and we rallied after the Memorial Day tornado, and we're in it again. We'll rally again as soon as this virus is, is gone. We're in this together, and we will recover together. So all I ask is that everybody be smart and stay safe. So with that, any final comment for the good of the council? Do I have a motion to adjourn? So move.
Second.
Do I have, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.